Okay, great. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Purdon, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cora?
Here.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman Ford?
Here.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forrest?
Here.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thanks for being here. We're gonna start with public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time.
And Mayor, just for the record, Councilman Gibson had a family obligation this evening.
Thank you. Welcome, Rick.
Hey, good evening. It's a wonderful day in Bonita. If my property goes up a thousand dollars in value, I certainly should be able to come up with eighty-one cents to give to the city for the success of the increased value of the city. So I have no problem with keeping the rate, the millage, at the same rate. And if the property value of the city goes up, then that's sort of the reward for the city of good stewardship of the city. As far as your city manager, you've got the right person in the right job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Other members of the public?
Good morning, Mayor, councilpeople.
Welcome, Dwight.
Thank you. For the record, Dwight Esmond, Paradise Road area. It's gonna be no surprise to any of you that I'm gonna have a question about the money we pay for the extra police protection. First, let me say, some people are talking about defunding the police. That's about the dumbest idea I have ever heard. I'm not for that, but I am not for spending money on a problem if we don't have one. So, my question for Captain Lee, I have some questions, and I hope they will be questions you want answers to as well. How does the coverage from the sheriff's office in Bonita compare to Astero, particularly like in terms of response times? Do the fourteen deputies and two sergeants work exclusively for Bonita, or do they work for the county? I'm kinda curious as to why the substation was moved out of the old building downtown up to Astero. I hear people talk about community policing. I don't really know what that means, so if you can define that, that would be great. And if the council does approve additional money, what would that allow your office to do? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to item five, which is an overview of the tentative millage and budget public hearing. This is green sheet twenty dash oh-nine-two-four-four. Ann Wright, you wanna tee us up here, please?
I certainly do. I would like to read through the green sheet. This meeting is a public hearing on the tentative millage rate and tentative budget for the city of Bonita Springs for fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. The statute requires that this public hearing be preceded by notice of the hearing. Trim notices were mailed in August notifying property owners of hearing date. The statute required that we publicly read the following. The proposed millage is point eight-one-seven-three mills per thousand of taxable value compared to the rollback rate of point eight-oh-one-five mills per thousand of taxable value. The proposed millage is a one-point-nine-seven percent increase from the rollback rate. This proposed millage is established to pay for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2021 budgeted expenditure.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Anyone discuss?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's been a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Okay, discussion. Amy, wanna start down on your end?
Are we just discussing keeping the rate at, I'm in favor of maintaining the rate as we have decided earlier?
Okay. Yeah, and you know, I've heard a lot of that, and actually especially from you, Fred, that people can't hear you, so if we can get very cognizant of that?
I confess that I just got some hearing aids, so it might be affecting my voice, but I'll speak up clearly. No, I'm in favor of maintaining the millage rate as is to cover the expenditures as presented by the manager.
Great, thank you. Jesse?
Yes, I'd like to maintain the status call for the millage rate. I think, Amy, maybe the proposed millage is a one-point-nine-seven percent increase from the rollback rate. Just looking at that for a second, it almost seemed as if the green sheet was not saying, keep it the same. So that's, it took me a second to...
Right, I mean, there's a little double talk in there, and we're keeping the millage the same.
We're keeping it the same.
Not the rollback rate. If we were to go to the rollback rate, the increase would be one-point-nine-seven.
Right.
But it seems kinda redundant to mention it. I agree with you.
But it's, I mean...
No, if you went to the rollback rate, there wouldn't be an increase.
There would be.
It'd be zero.
If you went back, right, fair enough. Said even better.
Yeah.
So there you go. I mean, do we always word it that way, year after year?
That's required, I would say.
That is required, okay. Very good. Right, okay. Laura?
I'm in favor of it. And what a great job Ann and your team did. Thank you. Really phenomenal. So, thanks.
Thank you. Chris?
I'm in favor of it as well. I think the city, I think it's what, six years in a row, seven years in a row?
Eight.
Eight years in a row.
But who's counting?
Right. But who's counting?
I was a much, I was a much younger man then. So, no, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. Fred?
Yeah, and I am in favor of it too, and I wanna compliment Ann on the good work she's done on this budget so far. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, so there's been a motion to approve and a second as a further discussion. Derek?
It is a public hearing.
Yes, and it's a public hearing. So is there other, what, we wanna take more comments from the public? Let's do it.
If it's on the tentative millage or the budget itself.
Yes. You had, you said your piece. Anybody else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cora?
Hi.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Hi.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Ford?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Forrest?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Item six, Ann, would you like to tee this up as well? And it's a council discussion of the tentative millage and tentative budget. And item A is a presentation, or I'll just, I'll let you take it from here, Ann. How's that?
What I'd like to do is start with a brief PowerPoint, but I do wanna mention that later on in the agenda, item eight is when the actual resolution to establish a millage vote will be presented to the committee. So just to do a little highlight, and the PowerPoint is a copy in front of you, and it looks like the screen is behind you. So, this is focusing on the general fund. And just a recap of where we are with the general fund revenue. Total revenue nineteen million, seven-hundred-fifty-eight-thousand-nine-eighty-eight, and you can see the competition with our largest source of revenue coming from the excise, the tax, the forty-six percent of the total pie of revenue fund. Total expenditures, general fund, fourteen million, four-hundred-fifty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-eleven. Forty-two percent of that being spent on general governmental services. The next one is an update of our debt. We did post on a loan in August, and so we have added that. The 2020 loan stated due August first, 2035. You can see that added to our debt service schedule. And then a reminder of the remainder of our budget calendar. The final budget hearing will be a week from today, September sixteenth, at five to five p.m. at the same location, that'll be the final budget hearing. And then on October second, we will have the first reading of the capital improvement plan ordinance. And on October twenty-first, the second reading of the capital improvement plan ordinance. And at this time, if Mayor, if you'd like to then go on to the items that are listed, I would send to item number six.
Okay, item A, thank you, Ann. There's a presentation by the Lee County Sheriff's Office regarding current, current levels of service for the city of Bonita Springs Community Policing Unit. This is Councilman Jesse Purdon, green sheet number two-zero-dash-zero-nine-dash-two-six-seven.
And Mayor, just as a brief introduction, they will be having an overview from Captain Lee, but there are some items in the safety of our officers, as well as law enforcement activities, that they won't be able to go into exact detail on. And if there's any additional follow-up, Captain is more than happy to talk one-on-one with anyone as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Captain Lee, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, the City Council, city staff. On behalf of Sheriff Marcino, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, appear before you this evening. First of all, I wish to thank City Council and the city staff for all that you do. It's very much appreciated, and we appreciate each and every one of you. Prior to making my presentation, I just wanna deviate just for one second, but it's something that's important to me and as well to the, to our city. We have a new sergeant that's actually joining our Bonita Springs Community Policing Team, so I wanna go ahead and formally introduce her. This is Sergeant Sarah Rodriguez. She has been with the sheriff's office for about eight years. I knew her when, when she was a very young deputy, starting out. And she has actually had a spectacular career for the time that she's been here. She went through patrol. She actually ended up going, joining us as a detective, became a major crimes detective, specifically a homicide detective. She was recently promoted, and she is now part of our Bonita Springs Community Policing Team. What's phenomenal and I'm very happy with is that she actually used to be a Bonita Springs Community Policing Deputy. So she's actually gone full circle, and as of just a couple weeks ago, she joined us, but she's a face that you're all gonna be seeing, so I just wanted to take a moment to introduce her to all of you. Thank you. So, council had inquired as to current levels of law enforcement services as it pertained to Bonita Springs Community Policing. And what I'm gonna do is, just briefly, I'm gonna touch on a little bit of the history, what community policing is about. If there are any of the questions that you'd ask, please get with me later, and I'll be more than glad to go ahead and, and answer those for you. But either way, there was a pilot program that was established back in 2002 at the inception of, you know, the city of Bonita Springs. I was actually involved in that at the time. And it was a pilot program to go ahead and focus on enhanced policing. It was, the idea was to go ahead and, and adopt community policing to go ahead and, you know, with the new city, to continue to establish law and order for the city, and of course, address quality of life issues. Back in 2002, we had two deputies. That was what the pilot program consisted. The success of the program was such, to where in 2006, those levels were actually adjusted, and we had fourteen deputies, and these were all assigned to patrol, so there were twelve deputies along with two supervisors. And then in 2007, there was an addition of two detectives that were specifically tasked in addressing the narcotics-related issues within the city of Bonita Springs, and we currently have those. And since 2007, okay, we have not increased the manpower of, of our, of our community policing unit. It's important to note, and this is something that I wanna emphasize, is that the community policing program does not impact the core level services that the Lee County Sheriff's Office already provides. So by, by having these deputies, it does not impact that core level of service that, that the sheriff's office provides. As a result of the partnership between the city and the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and what's of great benefit, is that the city has access to an entire infrastructure of law enforcement services to include our canine unit, aviation unit, marine unit, major crimes detectives, forensic teams, SWAT team, bomb squad, et cetera, just to name a few, and these are all available at our immediate disposal. So, we routinely will have an event that occurs, and literally within minutes, we have a significant amount of resources that are available to our team, and we're able to go ahead and successfully accomplish our mission. Now, the core fundamentals of community policing, and this, this will go to address the question from earlier, is to effectively address crime and quality of life issues through community partnerships. And these partnerships are with individuals, citizens, neighbors, community groups, businesses, and city government. The objective has always been to work with the community to reduce crime and maintain a high quality of life, by identifying issues and/or concerns in a timely manner, and working to seek a productive resolution to these matters at their infancy, if at all possible. As a result of this successful relationship with the city of Bonita Springs and the Lee County Sheriff's Office, we've significantly reduced crime and continue to maintain a quality of life that we all enjoy. Allow me to put some perspective as what we do annually, and this is what the Bonita Springs Community Policing Team and those that are part of our core level service. So based on current statistics, and these statistics will vary depending on the source, but this is from the U.S. Census Bureau, Bonita Springs currently enjoys an estimated population of over fifty-nine thousand people, with a seasonal population estimated to be at over a hundred thousand. This estimated permanent population is a twenty-nine-point-six percent increase from 2006, when the current police, current community policing program was established. Our crime has consistently dropped, however, our non-self-initiated calls, and these are calls for service that our deputies respond to. So, someone picks up the phone, they call, there's, there's a call for service, okay? At this point, okay, the latest numbers, and this would've been as of 2019, they've increased with the population growth. So last year, between our core level service deputies and the Bonita Springs Community Policing Deputies, we responded to a total, and this is an amazing number, twenty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-six calls for service. This being an increase of thirty-seven-point-one percent over 2006, when those levels were established. Our self-initiated calls for service, these being traffic enforcement, neighborhood patrols, closed business checks, et cetera, increased sixty-nine-point-one percent from 2006, for a total of thirty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-eight calls, making a combined total of fifty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen calls for service that our deputies deal with on an annual basis. And that is an impressive number. When you sit and you look at the population, and you see what we accomplished, and, and pretty much the level of service that we've been able to maintain. Every year, though crime has dropped, 2020's gonna be a unique year, and the current health crisis and other factors that have impacted are normal, and that's with everybody. Yet, we will continue to strive and keep the city safe. I'll close in saying that I am very proud of our agency and our community policing deputies, as they do a tremendous job in working with our community to keep the city of Bonita Springs safe. This contributes to a desired vacation destination, a location where businesses thrive, and a place that we all come, call home. So, thank you very much for your time, and if there's any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer.
If you could, great, thanks, thanks, you and Jesse, this is your bringing this forward. Would you like to start us off here?
Absolutely. Captain, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for, you know, this discussion is probably, this is the fourth time I've heard those numbers. And the first time I had sticker shock, I was just amazed at the fact that, A, we haven't looked at this contract in fourteen years, and B, we haven't given you any additional officers, but our population has gone up thirty percent. And this entire time, and I don't think you ever would've, you guys, Lee County was not gonna come to us and say you needed more help. You guys, you guys are gonna get it done, and you're keeping us safe, and I think it's, it's well overdue that we try to give you some additional help in the city. And as we discussed earlier, I have a couple questions for you, and I hope you could answer these here and now. Number one, if you were given an allocation in the ballpark of sixty-five thousand dollars to utilize for the detective position we discussed, can you get that done in what's left of the fiscal 2020 year? Number one. Number two, would you help us as we move forward in the budget season, and send the numbers and the positions for an additional, as we discussed, an additional allocation for 2021, and then an additional officer in 2022? So, we're talking three all day over a period up to 2022. Are you comfortable with that, and can you do those things?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you very much for, for that opportunity. And yes, by all means, it's something that we can accomplish. We would obviously start off with a detective position, which would definitely benefit the, the current program that we have. It'll allow us, again, to geographically focus on the area of Bonita Springs. And indeed, as the numbers speak pretty much for themselves, but you all have experienced, you know, and observed the, the quality of life that we, we all are able to live, that yes, an augmentation to patrol would be outstanding. So, yes, we can do that.
Okay, so, just to be clear, so, so you understand what I'm saying is that the 2020, meaning immediately, we're gonna get you help, then moving into the budget, we'll get, we'll get, circle back with you and get the specific numbers and positions you might potentially want for 2021 and 2022. And we know that's in the ballpark of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
We know it's in that ballpark. So, if you'll work with us on the back end as we get towards the budget season, I just wanted to, to thank you for saying that you could do that 2020 now, and get you a little help. And then I'd like to make a motion that, as we discussed, Arlene, and with Ann, sixty-five thousand dollars from the, from the unin...
Well, it would be the, on a signed fund balance.
Okay, so sixty-five thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance to immediately create a sixty-five thousand dollar detective position that would focus specifically on Bonita Springs to address the fourteen-year lack of, of, of increase while we had a thirty percent population increase. So, this is our chance to make it right, and start thinking of it as a budget priority. It's a quality of life issue, it's a safety issue, and it's, it's time. So, I'm looking for a second.
So you're making that motion, and I'll second that. Now, further discussion. Amy, I'll start with you.
I'm in favor of adding a detective for this year, and, but I, I don't wanna tie up the council that, in the, in the following budget, 'cause who knows what's gonna happen there. So I'm just in favor of that one at this time, and I'm willing to relook at it after a year and see how it all works out.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
I never saw you shy. You should've just said you needed more folks. But I agree with Amy. Let's go with, you know, and see with the next season. So, yeah, support it.
Okay, Chris?
Captain Lee, just from your perspective, and I don't know if that was, the number of one detective was suggested by you or the other way around, but what do you, if you had your choice, what would you suggest would be the right number of detectives?
At this point, I think one detective would be appropriate.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so we should be good with one at this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Fred, thanks, Chris. Fred?
Obviously, I would support this, but I think that we really ought to be looking at adding a couple deputies too, but you're not gonna pay for the full-time, because it's gonna be six months before you bring them on board.
That's already prorated. The sixty-five is already prorated.
I have the floor, okay? The reason we need to do this, if you look across the country, we don't, right now, we can use more deputies to do some of that, getting more close to the neighborhood, like the old days. And so they can do things that they used to do, and you can also get into letting deputies also call for social workers when they're needed. That's, that's something that's important, to keep the peace and tranquility that we have. Now, I'll, I'll support this, but I think that we really should seriously consider adding deputies, because a detective is not pounding the beat. What they're doing is investigating special crimes, whether that be homicide, robberies, or something like that. But that's just what I think. I think...
I'd love to...
Our priority, I think, is to ensure that we're keeping public safety at the very best we can provide.
Absolutely.
It's more important than flooding protection. It's somewhere as important as probably water quality, but that's my point.
Thank you, Jesse?
Yeah, just to clarify, first of all, the cap, Captain was the one, after thorough analysis and multiple discussions, that decided a detective was the right thing for Bonita, and he went over all the reasons why that would be. Additionally, the sixty-five thousand number that I gave you was already a prorated number, Fred, which is what I was trying to explain. In 2021 and 2022, isn't tonight. That's gonna come up when we do the budget. But I'm just asking that he would work with staff and give them the appropriate numbers that we've already discussed, so everybody can see everything.
All right.
So, it's, it's not a, it's not a two-part motion. It's a one-part motion to help get us a detective, which is what he has decided in his expert opinion is the best thing for our city, and I'd like to...
Yep. Now, so, yes, Amy?
I just wanna react to what's been said here. I'm very much in favor of this. I think we should clarify that, you know, this is a position not of sixty-five thousand. What is the position?
It's a hundred and seven thousand...
A hundred and seven, so we're, we're authorizing, because we're not gonna fire the guy after eight months or something. So this is gonna be continuing position of a hundred plus, and I think that should be clear to everybody. I'm still in favor of it. But we're, we're putting sixty-five in this year's budget, upcoming budget, because we're not gonna do it for twelve months. So I think that we had to clarify. And, oh, I forgot something else. Oh...
Why don't I give you a second to think, and I'm obviously all in favor of this, and I know you and I've had several discussions, and I know it's happening, but I would just ask that with the revitalization of our downtown, that we continue to have a presence down there like we have, but it's very important, as we know. I would ask, and obviously I'm looking at Arlene, although it's not her fault, that we keep our video cameras of our park and everything up and operational, so when we have unfortunate incidents like we had in the park, I can't expect you to be there at three a.m. Nobody would expect that, but that our cameras can pick that up and we don't get caught flat-footed. But you guys are doing an amazing job. Please, please keep an eye on downtown, and of course, everywhere else too. But knowing that Bonita Springs is revitalized downtown, and there's no, there's nothing improper gonna go on down there like days have passed, I think is just very important. So thank you for all the great work that you and your team do.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Absolutely. So, yes, Amy?
And I do remember, I do caution, I think we should rely on our sheriff's department to determine how to run his department. So before we tell him we should have this, that, or the other thing, I'd like to just have, you know, a review sometime mid-year, how it's working, the areas where you think it's, it needs some help, and how you're gonna take care of it, either with additional personnel or redirection of the personnel, because we don't know how, we're not capable of doing that. So, again, we set the policy. We want it to have this highest quality of safety and community engagement that's possible, and we appreciate what's been done in the past, and we just wanna continue it. So, that's just a point I wanna make, to make sure that we're not telling you what to do. You have to tell us what you need.
Understood, thank you.
And can I clarify one more time, that the captain was fully involved, and this was based fully on his recommendation, based on operational use and things that he thought was best for the city. I didn't say I want a detective. I didn't say I want an officer. I didn't say I wanted a dog. I said, what would you like, what would, what would make Bonita Springs safer? And that's what he came back with. So just to clarify...
I'm not talking...
I'm just to clarify, this is what they need, and I'm happy to help.
Jesse, other people were suggesting other things.
I heard that, and I was just clarifying. That's not how it happened.
No, I'm saying that none of us should be telling him...
And nobody is.
All right, all right, so you agree with me?
Exactly.
Wonderful. Just another day in the life of Peter Simmons, so. Wonderful, Sheriff. Thank you very much. Is there further comments? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, Chris?
There was one question I think would be useful for people to have an understanding. When you say the core services that we receive in addition to the contract services...
Yes, sir.
So, if you were to compare our public safety resources, including the sheriff's office, to what Astero has, can you give a flavor, and can you give some color about how that, how we're different, how we're perhaps better protected than Astero? Because they're not contracting additional services. I think people would be interested in your view on that.
Understood, yes, sir. So, the, the city of Bonita Springs, and we've actually currently realigned our zones, and our zones actually do match the, the actually outlay of the city itself at this point, and that was done about two years ago. So we, we have actually deputies that are dedicated to that specific zone. With the Village of Astero, they are currently growing, so we have only one zone in theirs, whereas we have two in, in Bonita Springs. And then, of course, there's a fraction of, of the village that does fall into a secondary zone that is there. However, our deputies, our Bonita Springs community deputies are used exclusively within the city of Bonita Springs. The only time that you will see them performing any services outside of the city of Bonita Springs is either A, when they're driving home, if they happen to live outside of Bonita Springs, or B, if we do have a, a major incident that would require personnel to go ahead and respond to it, then they'll go ahead and get pulled. But our deputies are here for their entire shift. We do have the substation that is still located in downtown Bonita. They are in front of the park, and deputies still operate out of that location. So, again, to just answer the question that came up earlier for anybody that may otherwise be, you know, interested, I, I am the commander of South District, which is an area that encompasses from Six Mile Cypress all the way down to Collier County, and I'm also the commander of the Bonita Springs Community Policing Unit. So, we actually have two substations. The one that the Bonita Springs Community Policing Deputies operate out of on a daily basis, which is across the park. It's the one on Reynolds Street. And then we have the one... one on Reynolds Street. And then we have the one that serves not only Benita Springs, but the remainder of the area of responsibility that I have, which is located at the Benita Springs, Astero County or City Village Line.
Good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So there's been a motion and a second. Now, this is a public hearing. Do we want to allow some public comment, Derek?
This is just an informational one.
Very good. I'm just double-checking. When I try to assume things, I get in trouble. So there's been a motion and a second. Counsel, is there further discussion? Okay. Roll call, please. Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Council McCourty?
Aye.
Council McCorrigan?
Aye.
Council McRoma?
Aye.
Okay, great. Congratulations.
Thank you for your time.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Great job, Jesse.
And welcome back.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, great discussion. Okay, item B, discussion regarding a placeholder of five-hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-five, twenty-six through FY twenty-nine, thirty, for the baseball complex master plan. And this is Councilman Jesse Purdon, green sheet twenty-oh-nine-two-sixty-nine. Jesse?
Yeah, I actually, you know, is Nicole here? You know, Nicole and I had a really good discussion about this, and I think she would maybe even articulate this better than I. So Nicole, you want to-
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Nicole Perino, Parks and Recreation Director for the record. Sorry. Jesse and I did meet a few weeks ago, probably, and discussed the overall baseball complex master plan. And he was, he was asking me what the different phases were, because I do have a giant poster board in my office that shows all of them. And we were looking at, okay, this is phase one, which, which is needed the most because it is ADA compliance issues as well as stormwater and drainage. But it is giving you a little snippets of the aesthetic portions. But once we finish these, we are having to move fences and things like that to get to the ADA compliance that we're needing. So three of the four baseball fields are not going to be regulation because we did have to move those fences. Those three fields need completely redone, which would be phase two. So phase two would be, it wouldn't just be a resawed. It's moving irrigation. It's moving baselines. It's completely redoing those three fields. Beyond those three, I mean, at that point, it would probably be best when you add in the new fencing as well as the new dugouts and things like that. But at most, it needs to be, those three fields need to be regulation. Little League can play on it for a short period of time, but they aren't going to be regulation fields. So that's the discussions that we had.
So that's, I mean, for me, it's just, the five-hundred thousand dollars, it could go up, it could go down a little bit. I just want to get it on our radar because, you know, we've spent so much time, and it looks, it's starting to look great. We want to make sure we have something put away to ensure that we can get it to finality, and that's what this is about. So.
Right. Okay. And I guess my only question would be, Nicole, and I think the answer's yes, but I certainly don't know. That's why I'm asking. This is quite a ways out, which is good. I mean, it's, you know, and for budgeting purposes, that's good. Are there grants, matching grants? You know, I know U.S. Conference of Mayors, the Major League Baseball is very involved, Little League Baseball, and that type of thing. So are they looking for matching grants, do you know, or are they-
We are looking at grants. Ellie, I know, helped us last year get the Minnesota Twins as well as-
Right.
Councilman Corey. So there are those type of grants. Some of those, they had some pretty strict restrictions on what you could and couldn't do. They didn't, you couldn't do fencing. You couldn't do irrigation. There are certain things like that that you couldn't do. So it could pay for abortion. But yes, we are always looking for grant funding to do these projects.
Fantastic. Okay. Further, yeah, Chris?
Just noting that the Minnesota Twins did provide some of the matching grant funds, but surprisingly, the Boston Red Sox don't have a matching grant program. I think it's outside of the state or outside of the area around Boston. So we could use somebody that might have some influence somewhere in the Boston area with the Boston Red Sox to maybe speak up for Benita Springs and see if that policy can't be changed. So if you've got any ideas on that, that would-
I'm a big fan. I don't know how much swing I have. I'll give it a shot and a swing. I'm an art fan. We can start there. So absolutely. Arlene, can you help me and Nicole remind me? That would be great.
And then another part of the function of this is the creation of the video that we sent out. It was thought, when we began the process, is that there might be an opportunity for outreach to the community as well for donations, possibly naming rights of fields in the future. So working with the Little League on that because we want to be consistent with their messaging as well. But it was thought that if we could create what the vision is, then there could be some more outreach for private funding as well, private-public partnerships.
Great. Great. Counsel, further, Amy, did you have something?
Actually, my question was about grants also, whether we should put it as a big lump sum at the, you know, in six years from now, or should we just put it out for a couple of years, or what's the best way of doing that? And my question was about matching. Should we do it like matching funds or?
I think, if I understood Councilman Purdon's direction, this was to keep it as a placeholder. So next year, we look, as she develops the planning, she'll have a price point for us.
Okay.
And then that's when we would divide out what we would be looking for as far as grants, which is like the other CIP projects, what percentage we would look at for as grants, what percentage we would look for as general fund. I understood there's like an idea to keep, just like we have done with the funding for the Rails to Trails, that we know we want to see that. If you move it into a future year, that will affect the financial planning of the five-year program, so that would change Ann's numbers.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
I still don't, my video still doesn't work, so I need help with that.
I'll get you a flash.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So I assume you're making a motion, Jesse, to support this, and I'll second that. Counsel, is there further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Council McCorrigan?
Sure.
Mayor Simmons?
Sure.
Council McCourty?
Aye.
I didn't say anything, but I'll say aye. That's okay.
Council McCourty?
Aye.
Council McRoma?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Are we punchy or what?
Great. Thank you. For a change, I didn't say anything, see? Something different. Okay, item C, discussion regarding compensation of city manager. And this is my item, green sheet number twenty-oh-nine-two-sixty-eight. And I think, I will read this. Or, does somebody want to read this?
I just make a motion to approve.
The green sheet?
Okay, yeah. I mean, there's a, there's a motion to approve in a second, but for the public, I'd like, I'd like them to hear it.
Are you talking the background on the green sheet?
Yeah, I don't-
I'll read it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. During the city council budget meeting, council discussed negotiating with the city manager regarding an increasing compensation. When she was appointed in 2018, the original contract provided for an annual salary of a hundred and fifty-two thousand with the same benefits as other employees for a term of three years. Pursuant to council's direction, the city manager and I, being the mayor, discussed the following: An annual salary of a hundred and seventy-five thousand with the same benefits as other employees; Two, an annual contribution of ten thousand dollars to the city's deferred compensation program, four fifty-seven. Should council authorize these terms, the city attorney will prepare a contract amendment to take effect commencing with the new fiscal year in October first, 2020.
Great. Thank you, Amy. And for whatever reason, I still don't see it, but I'll, that's as it is. And as we did a couple of years back, no, that's okay. Thank you. I don't know. A defective package here. That's okay. You know, a couple of years ago, when Arlene came on board and was elevated up from the deputy or assistant city manager, she asked for a number, which was one fifty-two at that time, and the answer was yes. And this is what she asked for, and once again, the answer was yes. And I believe she was very fair. She gave me a scope of what other city managers in the area are making. As of her, prior to this, she was the lowest paid, I believe that's correct, in the area. And now this will get her kind of in the middle of the pack, right, Arlene? So it wasn't a tough negotiation. She was fair right from the onset, not that that should be a shock or a surprise to anybody. And we discussed a few items, and, you know, there was a, our previous city manager had a number that was going into his retirement fund and, you know, each year or each month, I guess it is, or every pay period, however it works exactly. And we did discuss that, and she was very fair on that as well. So with that, I absolutely, wholeheartedly support this package, wholeheartedly support her and her team and everybody that works with her. She does a great job. And I know there's been a motion and a second to approve this, but I just wanted to add that commentary, seeing how I couldn't read the green sheet. And is there further comment, Fred?
Yeah, I'd like to point out that most of the cities, or a lot of them, also give car allowances and a lot of other things that are not in this package. So actually, if you factor those things in, she's probably not even in the middle.
But she's on the top now.
We have a, we're paying her average, but we got the best.
We've got the best, absolutely. So.
Yeah. I just want to recognize her extraordinary effort that she's made here. And if anyone wants to look at my performance evaluation, I did it from a little different perspective than others, and I went along our council objectives and discussed with each, her, each of those, and how I thought she had progressed those. And I think that that, for me, that was the most incredible experience. And so she got high marks in every area that we had asked her to do when she came on in 2018. So she's worth more than this. And my only improvement, which I don't think it's probably proven in this environment, would be to have some kind of a provision so she could have an extended contract with some kind of a renewal with an increasing salary to bring her up to the higher end, because I think that's the kind of caliber, the caliber of her. But I'm comfortable doing this because this will be for one year, and we could look at it again, go through the whole process again. And I'm sure that when we do our performance evaluations a year from now, it'll be this, we'll have the same similar results, and we can talk about it then. So I understand why we're just keeping it at one, but my preference would be to extend it with escalators, so to speak.
Right. Right. And actually, I will add for full disclosure, I thought I was actually trying to keep it, but it just jogged my memory when we were talking about an item here earlier. I wouldn't, I also had the discussion that I did not want to bind her, and did not want to bind future city councils, that I will not be on next year to this number. So with that thought in mind, Amy, that was exactly part of the conversation as well. Jesse, you had something?
Yeah, I wanted to say that, you know, I think she did undervalue maybe, and I had this discussion with her, and one of the things that she said is really one of the most Arlene things that I can really think of. She said, look at the, look at what's going on in the economy right now. She's like, it doesn't matter where I'm at in that group. She's like, with everything going on, I can't really, I couldn't see myself asking for more than that. And to me, that's just very much how she is. And I know, you know, I was kind of on the outside before, but I even, even being a chair of a committee, I could see how great she was, but being on the inside of it, you know, I did do her evaluation today. It probably wasn't as great as Amy's because I didn't have the, you know, advantage of seeing her progress. But since I've been here, you've been absolutely amazing to me. I probably talked to you, God, I talked to you multiple times daily and oftentimes on the weekends. And, you know, you've not ever won. I can bring something up and leave it. And I know that it's going to be taken care of every single time, very, very thoroughly, very, very professionally. You represent us very well in the community, and I'm very proud to have you as our city manager. So I enthusiastically will support this, and I am glad it's for one year because I think, God willing, if I'm on the council again, I'll have the ability to give her an increase that I think she would deserve. So.
Right. Right. Thank you. Okay. There's been a motion to approve in a second. Counsel, is there any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say also that, well, God willing, the economy is a whole lot better too. But I also admire Arlene tremendously, and the team is reflected by leadership. And really, our team is so fabulous, thanks to you and Matt and Laura and Ann, Deb. You know, everybody's just like, works together. And I gave you my evaluation and gave a little ornament, Mary Poppins, because you just pull every, any answer. Everything comes, a question from what field, you've got the answer. You know, something from four years ago, you're like, right there, detailed. So you are amazing with twins and a thirteen or fourteen-year-old daughter. So really, fabulous. We love you.
Great. Thank you very much. Counsel, anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Council McCourty?
Aye.
Council McCorrigan?
Aye.
Council McRoma?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Council McCorrigan?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Now, that number two over there, you know, and that masked man over there. Great job, team. Thank you very much. Okay, item seven is announcement of the percentage, if any, that the recalculated proposed millage exceeds the rolled-back rate. Ann?
Right. I'd like to reread.
What I messed up earlier, right? I tried to ask a question, but asked it the wrong way.
No, this is on the agenda. Again, this is by statute. And the events that the discussions have preceded have caused any changes in the millage, and you've already taken a little cover on that. So I'll just reread what I previously read to meet this requirement.
I was going to say, I know, sorry, that's probably a good thought, that might your phone? Just, or do you have one there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's on.
I think that's better. Okay.
The proposed millage is point eight-one-seven-three mils per thousand of taxable value compared to the rollback rate of point eight-oh-one-five mils per thousand of taxable value. The proposed millage is a one-point-nine-seven percent increase from the rollback rate.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve?
Okay, motion to approve in a second? Counsel, further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Council McCourty?
Aye.
Council McCorrigan?
Aye.
Council McRoma?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Council McCorrigan?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay. We're going to move on to, thank you, Ann. Item eight, a resolution of the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, adopting the tentative levying of an ad valorem, of ad valorem taxes for the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, for fiscal year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, establishing the date, time, and place for a final hearing to adopt the final ad valorem taxes for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and providing an effective date, and this is green sheet number twenty-oh-nine-two-four-five. And Ann, I'll let you handle that one, too.
Okay. At this time, I would like to request counsel's approval of the resolution that is in the package. It does identify the ad valorem military and as you've indicated, and sets the location for the final hearing at the same location, September sixteenth, at five oh five PM. So this tentative, this millage rate is the point eight-one-seven-three mils that you've already-
Okay.
So if you can approve this resolution.
Great. Motion to approve?
So approve. So move.
In a second? Okay. Dynamite. Counsel, further discussion? All right.
We're good.
Roll call, please. We're good.
Council McCorrigan?
Aye.
Council McRoma?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Council McCorrigan?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Council McCourty?
Aye.
Okay, dynamite. Item nine, a resolution of the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, and providing an effective date, and that's green sheet number twenty-oh-nine-two-four-six. And Rooney, the G needs to be capitalized and the N in number. So other than that, it reads perfectly. Ann?
Yeah, and I do have an addition, revised resolution to distribute to you because we did take action at this hearing to change the budgeted expenditures by ninety, a total of ninety-eight thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand dollars for the public safety, and then for the salary and the benefit, thirty-three thousand for the city manager. So I do have a revised resolution. And what you will find on this-